Good morning, council members and staff, members of the public. The special council meeting of November 3, 2025 will now come to order. And before we start roll call, I just want to say that, and before we take a moment of silence, this is one of the saddest responsibilities we as council members will ever have, and that is to begin the process to select a replacement for someone who has passed away. Let's just do our best to honor our friend and colleague, Protam Kama. May we have a moment of silence? Ms. Clerk, please proceed with roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proceeding with roll call. Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
Madam Chair, proceeding with roll call.
Any members who are not present or who are present from a non-public location should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of roll call. Vice Chair Yuki Lei Sukimura.
Here, present.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakaiaka, kakaku.
Councilwoman Gabe Johnson.
members will see her death as an opportunity to advance their own political agenda. This would be a morally bankrupt act. Tasha was elected by us. The interests of the voters must come first. We voted for her and by extension, we trust her to name her replacement. To not support her choice is anti-democratic. If she had recommended someone unqualified, it would be a different matter. But she has recommended Mr. Patangan, a leader with irreproachable qualifications. So please honor the voters, not personal selfish interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions, thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is John Pele to be followed by the Royal House of Hawaii.
Aloha and good morning. Councilmembers, can you all hear me?
Yes, good morning.
It is with a heavy heart that I testify before you today, but I thought I'd share my opinions, testify in a Resolution 25-202. And over the years, you know, I've gained some respect for what you guys do and I respect the work that you guys put in to your craft. I think a lot of people in our community don't realize how hard it is to perform the jobs that you guys perform on a daily basis. And one of those factors that I really have come accustomed to is the fact that you got elected. It's a lot of work and I can, I can relate to that work of that process. So I'm just asking you to consider in the process of filling the Kahului seat, that you take into heavy consideration Auntie Tasha's request at her replacement. Because let's, let's understand, as many of you sitting there, she was not only elected once, she was elected four times by her constituents of this county based on her beliefs, based on her values, based on what she would bring to the community. And in naming her replacement, she has solidified for the rest of her term the vision of those, of what she believed in. And I just hope that you consider what she believed in to represent this community that she was elected to do in part of your process to fill her vacancy. November 3rd, I think it's November 3rd, 2026, the people will speak and the votes will be counted and we'll move on. But to fulfill her vision and what the people voted on, please consider her request. And thank you so much and I appreciate the work that you guys do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much, John.
Chair, the next testifier is the Royal House of Hawaii and currently he is the last person signed up to testify.
Aloha. I'm the Royal House of Hawaii. A member of the Royal House of Hawaii and descendant and a real land tenant testifying before you today under heva heva kekahuna Nui. Ana ana heva heva Nui ya. But what is that called? Sorry for you guys lost to, but the person that's going to be like elected and stuff like that, are they going to have the correct qualifications? Because, okay, so little, little class session right now. So where are we right now, you guys? Not the state of Hawaii now, we stay in the Kingdom of Hawaii, okay? Hello. So there's Hawaii revised statutes basing laws off of the Kingdom laws. So we're going to have to be basing qualifications on Kingdom laws to, to see their qualification, yeah. And I, or I agree with ending the rentals, but not only just ending the rentals, you guys should need, or you guys actually have to call the descendants of those specific lands, of all the lands, because all of Hawaii is royal patented, a royal title, real property, land commission award from 1800s from the mahale. And the descendants and the heirs have to be contacted because we haven't been contacted. And, yeah, where's the accolades and the qualification? I like, I like the real. And, yeah, Hawaii revised statute 172-11, the land's supposed to go back, yeah, to the descendants, yeah. But the descendants never get caught up. So call them up. Yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, because I think I'm right. And I'm not, I think I'm, no, I'm, I'm right by law. But you got to follow all the royal patents and give the land back for real because again, we never got contacted. And, yeah, call the descendants of the royal patents because the royal patents last forever. And we in the Kingdom of Hawaii, yeah, okay. Get it right.
Time.
Aloha.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, thank you very much. Next testifier.
Chair, there's currently no one else signed up to testify, so this will be last call. And I see Mr. Law making his way to the podium.
Aloha kako, aloha. I jesi la from Kulaoka, wakua ahupua'aa. A little bit of sunshine has gone from the kingdom. Another Hawaiian bites the dust. Natalie Kama. I was walking by the apartments the other day and I saw a guy busting up some old furniture and throwing it in the back of his truck and I asked him, was that Tasha's stuff? He said, yeah. So I recommend taking up a collection for her family because the furniture wasn't anything new or nothing. It was that old stuff you get from the, the restore over there. The Hawaiian word of the day is pili ka mao. That means of close relationship, but not by blood. And the, the macron is over the first A. Oh, I think that, I appreciate the Royal House of Hawaii kind of grounding us there with the, the process. And I think you all should look into the Hawaiian Constitution, make sure that you're not crossing that up. And it was probably pretty sad when Lily Okalani died too. And I think Tasha looked a little like Lily Okalani. And I think that you guys should get a Hawaiian in there, anybody who's got any influence over the matter. And so the runner-up from the last election was, is Hawaiian. So that would be, that would be my first choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions? If not, thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Stacy Alapi to be followed by Travis Leggett.
Aloha council members. I just want to take a moment to recognize the Kama family and give everybody my condolences. I wasn't planning to testify today, but I felt like somebody needed to express support for the process laid out in the resolution. I read through it and I think that this process is fair to, not that there are necessarily sides, but fair to all perspectives for the council members to come up with a list by the tense for the, for the public to review that list and provide testimony on those nominees. I think is the most fair and democratic way possible to go about this really difficult process of appointing someone to that vacant seat. I also think it's really important that this process not hold up the work of the council as a whole and the important bills that are on the table waiting to be heard. It would be disrespectful, I think, to Tasha's legacy to put all of the important work of the people and the people she represents on hold to fill one seat. Quorum is five members. We have quorum today with eight and that shouldn't hold up the rest of the work of the council. I don't think that that would be respectful of anyone's legacy or respectful to this body or the people that all of you represent. So please just don't, don't, we all need time to grieve, but there's also work to be done. So we need to continue that, that work. We should hear Bill Nine and all the other important bills on the table. And I just really appreciate this process of a list. So, because I don't think that any one person should be appointing the seat. Mahalo for your careful attention to this matter and for handling this really difficult situation with so much grace, especially to Chair Lee and the rest of the members. I know that you're also grieving right now.
Thank you. Any questions? Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Alapi. I just was wondering, were you able to sign up to testimony online from the Agenda oral testimony link?
I just joined and raised my hand because I'm pretty familiar with this process. I didn't use any time link. This time I have it like saved in my Teams account.
Oh, oh, okay. Because we're getting some messages that the link is not working on the English Agenda, but you didn't use the link.
No, I have it saved in my Teams folder, but I did notice the Agenda looked weird today. Like I was trying to click on the way that I normally access the resolutions and everything. The links were kind of broken. So that's why I went through my own like saved documents.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Travis Leggett. Currently, he's the last person signed up to testify.
Ms. Clerk, can you check on what the previous testifier just said?
Yes, I just checked and the hot link that directs testimony to the county clerk at Mauicounty.us email is working in terms of I could click, click on it and get to an email that would be sent to the county clerk's office for testimony.
Oh, I meant the oral testimony link for folks wanting to testify online.
The instructions that we have are that it's online with Teams. So we have the Teams link and then we say raise your hand if you're testifying online.
Member Paulton, are you saying some people texted you or emailed you that they are not able to access this meeting, the testimony?
Yeah. And then when I, when I click on the oral testimony link, it says the site can't be reached from the Agenda. It says oral testimony link to Teams. This is what it looks like on my computer.
Ms. Clerk, do you need some time to check on it?
That, it says oral testimony. For information on testifying, please visit. And there's a link to the Mauicounty.us/Teams webpage that, let me check on that. I see that that link is broken, but it's only a general link to Teams information. At the very top of the meeting, it says meeting site online via Teams. That link is working.
I'm referring to the one on page two where it says oral testimony. For more information on testifying, please visit. That one is not working.
Right. And that one, so I agree, it is not currently working, but all that leads to is a link that gives you general information on Teams meeting platform itself. But the link to the meeting is working.
Okay.
Yeah. And the instructions, the instructions are clear, you know, raise your hand in Teams.
Okay, Vice Chair Sugimura.
So I just wanted, I got a text from Pam Toompop says she's on the phone and would like to testify. I don't know if it got through.
I think we have somebody just before her.
Oh, okay. So she's on. Thank you.
Anybody else had a question or comment of our members? If not, Ms. Clerk, please proceed.
Mr. Leggett, I saw him on a few seconds ago, but his, this is his opportunity to testify and he'll be followed by C. Rose Riley.
Aloha. Good morning, council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. It's a very sad day and just want to share a couple thoughts to inform this process. One is a little story. One of my first times presenting, I was so nervous and I wasn't sure if this public engagement thing was for me. And Member Kama just said a kind word to me, something about the limu. I had a bottle of limu. And that small kindness, like kind of, it was just what I needed in that moment. And it was just something special about her. And I really think that her successor should have that quality of just being kind and open and just holding space the way that she did. Second, I lost a partner about 10 years ago and it has been trial by fire. So there have been just a couple small lessons that I, or shared with me that I would like to share with everyone about grief. And it's a simple concept that was shared with me, which is the idea that grief is love that has nowhere to go. And the solution that I developed was to invest that love in other people and projects and not to let it stagnate. And I ended up telling the people close to me how much I cared about them more than ever. And the trick is to keep the love moving. And yeah, my husband was son of two immigrant refugees, born in a refugee camp in Austria, just about the kindest person ever. And, yeah, so that's all I have to say. I've sent some proposals for different memorial projects, but my last thought is that I believe that the person who is still with us in physical form, who has the most votes would be the most logical choice. And I sincerely appreciate your time and I thank you for your important work. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions? If not, next testifier.
Chair, the next testifier is C. Rose Riley to be followed by Pam Toompop.
What does it mean to steal? If you steal a car, it's a felony. If you steal a heritage, it's unimaginable how much to repay. Can I steal a minute of your time? And how many minutes have I stolen now from busy lives and busy schedules, overstressed families just trying to survive, just to pass a message, a hope, a vision, a way of being? It's seven years that it's been since we elected Tasha Kama. I helped her get elected. That's going to meetings, listening to what she has to say, coming up with a platform, coming up with things to express to others so that she can gain support. Getting someone elected the first time is the hardest. I heard this year that on the first day she was in office, the door was closed and she was threatened for hours, her and her family. That is seven years of votes stolen from me, from this community and from the water. The votes that have been passed during that time have been completely egregious, going back against the community that passed laws in the council before previously. Going through and doing that as first agendas is egregious, mismanagement, and theft. So, since we have been stolen from, the first thing that people always say when I look to them in the community is, are you going to give it back to the Hawaiians? Because I want to give it back to the Hawaiians. And that is what everybody has want. So I have rallied, educated, gathered, and spread for the change and vision that kept and inspired me as a youth and the people in place that sparked my infinite hope and vision for the divinity in humanity. vision for the divinity in humanity. But this body doesn't even seem to have the capacity to act Hawaiian enough. How many times does Keanu Sai have to come in here and talk about the illegal occupation? So what happened? The GMO moratorium. Apparently we got 84% of the vote on that and they just decided to lie. Tom Cook's been getting double the salary from investors, like since he got elected, we've been standing by each other in all these meetings. And so what? I'm not getting paid. I'm taking off of work. I'm giving up my career and he's on unemployment. 700 swimming pools in Wailea? Excuse me, don't interrupt me, I have time. Zero real water solutions? Fight us tooth and nail just to make apartments into apartment use again? And then act like a haina burning down was just yesterday's news? It's happening right now. This is what is happening in this council. The next person that I have gotten into being able to have a platform is Carol Lee Kamikona. We went around, we set up all of these votes, we went and got all of these platforms, these ideas.
Point of order.
All of these different ways that this community is educated on her platform and capacity. So business as usual is over.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, thank you very much.
Chair, the next testifier.
I'd like to remind the rest of the people coming to testify to please focus on the topic and on the agenda and that has to do with process. We're not talking about other people. We're actually honoring our colleague who passed away. Member Cook.
Thank you, Chair. I would ask the general public, people have a lot of strong feelings. It hasn't been a week since Tasha passed. Can we please be civil? Passion is respected, but it should take its place. Anyway, just ask people, please be civil and understand that this is a sad time that we're having this meeting to decide our moving forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Well said. Next.
Chair, the next testifier currently.
Wait, wait. Member Ronz Fernandez.
Aloha, Chair. I agree with what you instructed the testifiers, that to focus on the process and not be advocating for people, because that's not what this meeting is about. And that's what happened in the first few testimonies, is that they were advocating for specific people. And so if we're going to say focus on the process and not be advocating for any people right now, then it should apply to everyone. Aloha, Chair.
Yes, it does apply to everyone, but I really wasn't talking about that. I was talking about when people point out other council members who are not on, on the agenda. It's really hard to separate people talking about their sadness about Tasha passing away and us having to replace her with someone. It's really hard to do that. But anyway, we're at the end of, almost the end of the testifier list. And for those of you left on the list, please try to focus on the process to the extent possible. Thank you.
Chair, currently the last person signed up to testify is Pam Toompop. Ms. Toompop?
Was she on? Or does she look like she's still on?
She's on by phone.
Do you see her? Ms. Clerk?
I believe she is calling in from extension 2320 and unmuted on our end. Press star six on your end to unmute. It looks like you may have just muted and unmuted. Oh, there, you're unmuted now.
Aloha.
Aloha, we hear you.
Oh, awesome. Thank you so much. Well, first of all, I just really want to say and express to the family and all of Tasha's friends and supporters, my condolences. I know this has just hit us with very heavy hearts and certainly unexpected. But what I did want to say is that, as many of you know, as she, you know, went into the hospital, she was working tirelessly and she hadn't previously thought about, you know, whether she would run in the future and if she did or didn't, what kind of leader she would like to see. And she put a lot of thought, and I know she was doing that up till the final hours. And I was very blessed to get to say goodbye to her. But she worked tirelessly to think of somebody who would be a great leader. And we appreciate this process. We appreciate that it's moving forward very quickly because, you know, we all know that this is such a critical role in our community. But I do want to say, and I apologize because I know I'm last, but as others have said, so I do want to say, we support honoring her wishes. And by way, I say we, I mean the Maui Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors approved supporting her wishes. So we will stand for that. And we appreciate that there'll be a fair process and the community has a chance to bring in. But she wanted to ensure that the work she was doing and the commitment to the people of Maui County was honored and we stand for that. So I want to thank you for the opportunity and thank you all for the tremendous work you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, may we have the next testifier?
Chair, we have someone signed up to testify anonymously and they are online.
Aloha.
Yes?
Aloha.
Aloha.
Oh, hi. Hi. Sending so much aloha and love to you folks during this time. Grief and being able to function through hard times is, is definitely probably not what you all signed up for. And it's what you've been faith based with since long time since COVID. So process, what an opportunity for you all to let Tasha's light and her, her spirit still remain with us in the present as her culture, you know, and her faith allows. So when the gentleman was speaking earlier about grief, we can still give her the love. She'll still feel it. We believe that here, you know, in Hawaii and, you know, with, and Tasha practiced a religion that also maintained everlasting life. So let us honor her and, and her wishes and the process that you folks have in place and the grace that she would have loved to share and to have that voice. You folks can honor her soul in the present and, and let her have that voice without any on you folks. She's our best friend. We play out this gift it now, you know, so I truly hope to take this opportunity to tip the scales for her soul and her ohana and us, her ohana. To that beautiful aloha honoring, you know, the thing that would make you cry inside that maybe, that maybe we can't do because how the world worked yesterday, two days ago, three days ago. Now let us honor her soul so that it works the way she would have dreamed and that her ohana dreams. So may each breath bring you to that love that you could give her so you never feel the pain of the grief and only the love that she shares for us all in the truth that she now is free to express through her aloha forever. God bless you all. And may the pause that her beauty, when you think of her in your heart before your minds, guide you with this process and to the grace that, what a powerful opportunity you have. God bless you all.
Thank you. Are there any questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, there's currently no one else signed up to testify, so this is last call. If there is anyone who would like to testify, this is your opportunity. And I see Mr. Williams making his way to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand.
Aloha, kahu. My name is Kani Alii Williams. I just want to first start by expressing condolences for Tasha Kama. But I also want us to be very clear as well that none of these seats, these council seats, nobody sitting them is a king or queen. Okay? These are not thrones. If these were, then we might as well admit that we're in the Hawaiian kingdom and act like a kingdom where there's kings and queens. But that's not what we're doing here, right? This is American government, we're playing American politics. So it's through that process, that democratic process of the American government, meaning that last wills don't, and wishes don't decide who gets put into a seat. They're not decide by airship like it's a throne, okay? I just want to say that. And I also want to, the next part, I'm saying this as someone who is a traditional kahu, okay? Because I did hear an earlier testifier mention the words kahu na ana ana. And for those that are not ma'aa or ignorant and not knowledgeable about Hawaiian culture enough to know what a kahu na ana ana is, a kahu na ana ana are the types of traditional Hawaiian priests, okay, that cast curses, that pray people to death, make them sick, okay? People sitting in politics are very vulnerable to that because that is an ancient tradition in these islands that people need to be aware of when they make the decisions that they're doing in these seats. That's, that's all I want to say is to malama what you're doing. Make good choices, be pono with what you do. Because if you are not able to protect yourself against a kahu na ana ana, you are at the mercy of that person or those people that practice that. And quite frankly, if I'm being honest, the one person that has probably the best chance of protecting themselves is Kiani because she's from Molokai. And if you don't understand Molokai history, you understand Molokai history. If you don't, it's, it's good to learn some stuff, okay? That's all I want to say. Mahalani, aloha.
Thank you. Members, any questions? If not, next testifier?
Chair, there's currently no one else signed up to testify. If there is anyone in chambers who would like to, please make your way to the podium. This is last call. If you are online, you can raise your hand. Countdown is, oh, we have someone signed in as Kahala to testify.
Online?
Yes.
Hi, aloha. Thank you, folks. Here and see me.
Aloha.
Good? Okay, thanks, Kani. Aloha. Okay. Aloha, my name is Kahala, live in Happy Valley. So I just want to say, lords, ladies and peasants of the county of Maui, I prostrate myself before you today as an Ivy Tower-trained political wizard and your most loyal subjects. As one of the lowly dirt-borne commoners of Maui who sings daily praises to your rule, I come in humility to besiege the council, appoint us a new overlord. We desperately need a new royal heir to restore balance and harmony to our temblusion of the mushroom kingdom. And so in the spirit of the big five, I wish to make up five big suggestions on this appointment procedure. Number one, use trial by combat, a classic of feudal society where candidates can compete to the death for glory and treasure. If you want more information on trial by combat, you can see Game Was Stolen, season four, episode eight, timestamp 4730, where my husband, Oren Martel, is slain tragically by Gregor the Mountain Clicking. Number two, other procedure mystical quest for the amulet of democracy. And you can send candidates on a journey to the treacherous lands of the continental United States in order to seek that rare and elusive political ideal. Number three, magical election, where we can get the talking animals, birds, fish and plants of Kahului to vote alongside, for their favorite candidate alongside humans, elves, dwarves, hobbits, trolls, fairies as D I participants. Number four, kiss a frog, break the curse, transform the frog into a prince or princess who can fill the seats. Make sure to ask for consent. Consent is very important for matters like this. And number five, pull a sword from the stone, make a round table, you can hire me as a wizard consultant. And if all is done, you could just get it over with and appoint the people's champion, Auntie Carol, I guess. But where is the magical drama in that, right? Anyways, long live the realm, long live King Beeson, long live the kingdom of Maui County. Aloha.
Thank you. Questions, members? If not, next testifier?
Chair, there's currently no one else signed up to testify, so this again is last call. If you're in chambers, please make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand. And the countdown is three, two, one. Chair, there is no one indicating a desire to testify.
Members, any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony? So ordered. Ms. Clerk?
Chair, before you use Resolution 25202 establishing the process to fill the council vacancy for the Kahului residency area for the remainder of the 2025 to 2027 term.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Chair, I move to adopt Resolution 25202.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, second by Member Cook to adopt Resolution 25202. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
I believe that the resolution establishes the process for us to move forward with this sad vacancy that we are being asked to replace. And I appreciate the deadlines established, the clerk's participation and the, the work that OCS put in to develop this process. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Discussion, Member Cook?
No, thank you, Chair. I think this is, it outlines the process well for the charter and for us to hopefully work collectively with mutual respect and move forward to address some of the serious issues that are facing us in the community and.
Okay, thank you. Members, do you want the resolution read?
Maybe for the public, yes.
Yeah, for the public. Before I call on you, Members Sinancy, okay? Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It says Resolution 25-202 establishing the process to fill the council vacancy for the Kahului residency area for the remainder of the 2025-2027 term. Whereas the council and residents of Maui County were saddened to learn of the passing of Council Presiding Officer Protempore Natalie Tasha Kama on October 26, 2025. And whereas Councilmember Kama was elected to the council seat for the Kahului residency area and served the public with dedication and integrity. And whereas Councilmember Kama's passing created a council vacancy for the remainder of the 2025-2027 term, which expires at noon on January 2, 2027. And whereas, because the vacancy is for less than 15 months, the council must fill the vacancy within 30 days of its occurrence under Section 3-4 revised charter of the county of Maui 1983 as amended, referred to as a charter. And whereas, the council wishes to establish a process to fill the vacancy, now therefore be it resolved by the council of county of Maui 1, that it establishes the following process to fill the council vacancy for the Kahului residency area for the remainder of the 2025-2027 term. A, any council member may submit to the county clerk by noon on November 10, 2025. One, a proposed resolution to appoint a qualified nominee modeled after Resolution 02-90. And two, the nominee's completed financial disclosure statement form, Exhibit A, and application for a nomination paper, Exhibit B. B, before a submitted resolution is eligible for posting on an agenda, the county clerk must verify to the council chair that the nominee meets the qualifications enumerated in Section 3-3 of the charter. And C, one or more resolutions to fill a vacancy will be considered at a special council meeting and concurrent public hearing before the council's deadline to fill the vacancy. And D, at the special council meeting, council members may interview nominees in open session, except that upon affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members present, they request an executive session to discuss matters affecting privacy under Part 1, Chapter 92 Hawaii Revise Statutes, and the certified copies of this resolution be transmitted to the mayor, the county clerk and the corporation council.
Members Sinancy.
Thank you, Chair. Like many of the testifiers this morning, I too wanted to send our aloha and condolences to the Kama Ohana, to her office staff, Le, Naylin and Evan. And I just wanted to express our gratitude, working with, with them closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on the resolution? Members?
Chair.
Member Ronz Fernandez.
Aloha, Chair. Okay, two things.
So the Resolution Twenty-Five Dash Two-O-Two references Resolution Zero-Two Dash Nine-Zero, and I just tried looking that up and I couldn't find it online. I'd like to have that resolution attached as an exhibit just so that since it's being referenced and it can't be immediately found online, that if we're going to reference it, then we should, you know, provide, make it accessible to the public to be able to see it.
Okay, I'm sure that's not a problem.
Do you want me to make a motion?
No.
Do you want me to make a motion for that, or are you gonna?
No, I'm just gonna ask the county clerk if they can attach it. And also put that online, yeah?
Is that?
Yes, Chair, and we will post the link to the resolution in the chat.
Okay, mahalo, because I did look in the meeting details and it wasn't, it wasn't in the meeting details either. There's only Papa Kumoa Manao and written testimony in the meeting details, so the Resolution Zero-Two Dash Nine-Zero wasn't available there either. Is that considered a non-substantive amendment to add that?
Well, Rochelle?
You could do that by consensus, or you could do it with a formal motion, either way.
I, I think nobody objects. Any objections to adding the Resolution Zero-Two Nine-Zero? Oh, as an attachment, okay. So ordered, and what was your second question?
Mahalo, Chair. The second thing is, so the council meeting... Oh, is, is it not on here? I know you mentioned it verbally, that it would, the special council meeting where we would vote to fill the seat would be on October twenty, but that's not noted on the resolution itself?
That was...
Yeah, I don't see it. Okay, so...
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say...
Okay, so...
Dile, you talk.
Okay, so if it, if it is going to be scheduled on the twentieth or any time between November twenty, uh, sorry, November thirteen through November twenty-fourth, I would like to request that the meeting be recessed. I already had planned to not be available during that time, and I will be available on the twenty-fifth after eleven AM. And I would be able to participate in person. So I would like to have that opportunity to participate in person on November twenty-fifth when we take that vote.
I think, David, that's the deadline for us, twenty-fifth? Is that the thirtieth day?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, staff, calculations indicate that November twenty-fifth is the last day for council action under the charter. Thank you.
Anyway, you can join us from New Zealand? Is that where you're gonna be?
What, what time? What, what time does it, does the vote need to take place?
Well, the council, the special council meeting starts at nine. What time the vote is taken is anybody's guess. I mean, we couldn't predict that.
Not November twenty, I'm asking on the twenty-fifth. What time on the twenty-fifth, like by eleven fifty-nine PM, the twenty-fifth?
David, what time on the twenty-fifth is the deadline?
Thank you, Chair. The charter is silent as to the time of day. I do note that the county government, of course, officially closes its workday at four-thirty PM. So that might be the safest approach. I don't know if we could guarantee that county clerk could be able to certify, for instance, after four-thirty PM.
County Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that as long as the meeting is closed prior to midnight, the council's action would have taken place prior to the deadline on the twenty-fifth.
Prior to twelve midnight Hawaii time.
Yes.
Yeah, so I will be back in person on the twenty-fifth in the morning. So I'd, I'd like to be able to participate in person.
Members? Comments? Member Cook?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to respectfully accommodate my colleague, but I really don't think it's wise to postpone this until the very last day and the very last minute. Is there any way that we could coordinate timing with Member Rollins Fernandez? Member Paulton was just in New Zealand and participated on many, many occasions. I don't, I recognize it's difficult and it took a lot of effort, but my personal vote is not to leave it to the last day, the last minute, for this decision to be done. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Is it gonna decide by consensus? Member Uuhodgens?
Thank you, Chair. I would prefer not, I understand, Member Rollins and situation, Member Rollins Fernandez's situation, I would hope we wouldn't wait to the last day, only because the last time we did this, we got into a lawsuit about mass nominations on when we were able to submit and when we can take in nominations. And I think it was a whole issue about what constitutes the end of a day and whether that's four PM, whether that's midnight. Maybe Corp Counsel can kind of speak to that, but I'm sure we all remember getting sued for mass nominations. I want to be able to accommodate everybody, but I just want to make sure that we are within our timeframe.
Corporation Council.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we agree with Deputy Clerk that midnight would be the appropriate deadline, but the thing to consider, I guess, is that if you're not done by midnight and you have to recess your meeting, then that would take you beyond the deadline.
Member Paulton?
Um, I'm ready when Nohi's done. Oh, I'm sorry, you're waiting for the answer?
No, thank you. I'm good, I'm good. I just wanted it on the record, just so we can, you know, be su, not that I don't trust clerks, because I do. It's just that we got into this issue before with mass nominations, so I just wanted to clarify it on all ends. Thanks. Thank you, Member Paulton.
Member Paulton?
Um, I, I wanted to clarify, Member Rollins, what she had said. Did she want us to do the twentieth meeting and then recess before a vote was taken?
Member Rollins Fernandez?
For the clarifying question. Yeah, so my request was to keep November twentieth as the date that testimony is received, that enough deliberation happens so that you can recess the meeting, and then we complete the work on the twenty-fifth. So I know that testimony is generally the part of the meeting that we can't anticipate how long it'll be. We don't know if, you know, it'll be all of November twentieth and you'll have to recess again to continue taking testimony on twenty-first. So that part, I'm not asking for it to be delayed because that's the part that we don't have control over. We only have control over ourselves and when we stop deliberation and when we decide to vote and vote in time to meet the deadline. The reason for making this request for me to be there in person is because, yes, I'm participating remotely right now. I can do that from anywhere. But I know that when there are big things like this that are happening and the meeting recesses, talk happens, I know this, the public knows this, and if I'm not there in person, then I won't be able to be privy to whatever is being discussed, advised, deals being made, whatever. I know this, and that's why I'm asking to be there in person for this very important vote. Mahalo, Member Paulton.
And then I wanted to further clarify, is it just the testimony? Because the resolution, Part D, One D, says at the special council meeting, council members may interview nominees in open session, except that upon affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members present may request an executive session to discuss matters affecting privacy under Part I, Chapter Ninety-two HRS. Is that part on the twentieth also?
For that follow-up question. Yeah, so, you know, all the way up until we start deliberating on the vote itself. So interviewing candidates, if we go into executive session, I can figure that out remotely on being in a secure location to be able to participate online. But when, but I, I'd like us to recess before we complete that portion of the meeting.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. I'll yield to my colleagues if there's other questions. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Mahalo.
Member Sinancy.
Thank you. If our OCS staff or Mr. Rotz, if that's okay, I'm, I'm open to it as well, Chair. I did want to address One A, that there may be other submittals to the, for, from council members for, of other potential candidates for the, the position. And so would that make it to the, if, if we submit it by November tenth, that'll make it for the November twentieth? I, I know one testifier requested that a list be posted prior to the November twentieth meeting so that, so that people could see the list.
Yeah, we're going to make sure that anybody who is, has applied, well, actually through a member, through a member.
There is no open application, only a member?
No, there's no open application that I know of. David? We, we did talk about that, but the final decision was to have the member nominate one person?
Thank you, Chair. Well, actually, that's really the purpose of this meeting, is to consider this resolution and establish the process. So the, the resolution, of course, can be amended if the majority of the council would like to do so. But the, the resolution as drafted right now does not limit the number of potential resolutions by the body cumulatively or by any single council member. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we, we talked about that before. The problem with that, and of course, if there's consensus to accept that, we, we can go with that. But what's going to be time-consuming is verifying people's applications. See, because once they apply, then the county clerk has to verify their residency and they, that might have to entail checking on bills, let's say, to ensure that they were there for one year, electric bill, telephone bill, you know, things like that. So that part might be time-consuming. So we try to leave as much time as possible for all of that to be verified because all of that, because the names have to be posted for the next meeting. Yeah, for the meeting on the twentieth. All the names have to be posted. So whether you want to include all names of people who volunteer or just the members submitting one name, that's what we have to discuss. But did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Member Paulton?
Um, for whoever can answer, just wanted to also clarify. So to be considered a nominee, you need to have your financial disclosure in by the tenth, and it needs to be done correctly. Just, I don't know, maybe it's a lawyer question.
No, it's, it's a county clerk question, and I was told no, but go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And just having a financial disclosure statement would be information for the council members and for the public in terms of potential testimony or your consideration.
So it's not a requirement?
No, it would be prior to them starting in the, in the position officially, but not necessarily as part of your process to consider a nominee. In the normal course, in normal elections, as you all know, you have to file your financial disclosure statement at the time you file your nomination, your application for nomination papers. And so that was the reason that it was included, is to give the public and yourselves the same information.
And so can you clarify for us what is needed for a nominee to be accepted by you guys? It's just you put a name on a paper with an address where they live on November tenth by twelve o'clock, is that all that is needed? Or what specifically is needed by you folks to consider that a nominee is legitimate?
And so what we have discussed, Chair, thank you. And what we've discussed with Director Rotz is that any nominee is submitted, that that information belongs to the council. So we will check their voter registration and the information that we have, and we will pass that on to you, whether or not they may have lived in the residency area for the last year according to voter registration. But the ultimate decision is going to be yours in terms of whether they qualify.
So is that what we're doing right now, right here, is saying what needs to be turned in by November tenth at noon for a nominee to be considered legitimate?
I think that that's, yes, I believe that that is part of what you're considering. So the financial disclosure statement being part of that package is up to you folks. The charter requires, it's Charter Section Three Dash Three, they must be a citizen of the US, a voter in the county, and a resident of the area of the county from which the person seeks for a period of not less than one year. And so those, those requirements would apply to the Kahului residency seat.
Do you mind clarifying the boundaries of the Kahului residency area? Because some people think Sand Hills is Wailuku or Kahului or all the things.
Yeah. So the, the actual description, and it's, it is, I agree, a little bit cumbersome. We can provide a map.
And post it to ground a case?
Yes, we can do that. It's Section Three Dash One of the charter, and it's Section Number Four. The Kahului residency district area shall be described as follows, and it gives you this spatial definition, but yes, we can post a map.
And, and that section of the charter as well?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll yield to my colleagues if they have any other clarifying questions.
We should stay on this subject, so qualifications and what requirements we will place on them as far as submittals before we go on to anything else. Any comments on, on this subject? Vice Chair Sugimura?
So I, I just want clarification of what was said.
In your mic.
Okay, here. I just want clarification. So according to the resolution, the nominees would complete, qualified nominees would complete after Resolution Zero-Two Nine-Zero, and the nominee's completed financial disclosure statement form, Exhibit A, and application for a nomination paper. So you're saying that it doesn't have to be completed? It can just be their name on a piece of paper, where their address is, or do we? That's what I'm asking about.
Ms. Clerk?
The reason that we, our office suggested using the application for a nomination paper as the application is that that gives the same information that all of you had to provide when you were running for office.
Yes.
So we thought that that would be useful information for you to have and also the public who may want to testify. And then the financial disclosure statement, as I said, it's, it's not required in terms of the charter doesn't require that to be filed in, in this situation. But it's also information that, under normal circumstances, the public would have available.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know. So if we wanted the nominees to fill out the application as well as the financial disclosure, we can ask for it now?
Yes, and I think that that's exactly what you folks are deciding. Yes, and and I think that that's exactly what you folks are deciding right now is is what you want the application to include.
Okay. I would like that. Consistency.
Any other uh requirements, members? So, yes, member Uhu Hodgens?
Thank you so much. So not too dissimilar to what we do, not all of it will be public, right? Like their financial disclosure, if we do request that it's in, um similar to what we do for all other nominees, um and for us. I think for people to feel comfortable to fill it out, can you tell them that not everything is going to be public?
Um, so that would be up to you folks if you want to uh have it um public. So when when you file your nomination papers, you have to concurrently file a financial disclosure statement, which is public. So it's up to you whether or not you want to have the financial disclosure statement be private. Um, it whoever is ultimately um nominated by you folks, um appointed. Um, it will be public because they'll have to file it once they're official.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, Member Paulson?
Um, to clarify what member Uhu Hodgens was asking, anybody that posts papers when they file to run for office, their financial disclosure statement is public whether they win or lose. Okay, I thought I saw a member Johnson had his hand up.
Member Johnson? Do you have a question?
Um, yes, Chair, I just like, um, I wanted to make sure you guys were done discussing that, um. Because I had something else, but I just wanted to say that I support starting on the twentieth and uh recessing to vote on the twenty-fifth. Um, I support that. And I guess my question, and if it's not relevant, uh if you guys still want to go on to what you were discussing. You know, we had in two thousand and two, a council member from Molokai, council member Kowano passed away. And I'm and we had to do this uh process then. I'm curious, how does the process been the same? Has it changed? Did you guys look at that as reference? I know there's a charter and all of this, but I'm, you know, this is not the first time. I'm wondering how that played into how this is working now.
Yes, it has changed and I'll ask uh David Rotz to explain it to you. Residency requirements as well as posting requirements, David?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, at your request, staff looked into um the two thousand and two preference, uh excuse me, um precedent that Councilmember Johnson referenced. Um, in some respects, the process is very similar in that the council scheduled a special council meeting, just as you're having today, to talk about the process. And then um a resolution at that time was not adopted. There was just consensus reached during the discussion. Um, today you do have a resolution before you can get a formal agreement among the body, if you so choose, on the process. At that time, the council agreed on an open nomination process where members of the public who met the requirements, including um living in the applicable residency area, could fill out a form that was distributed via press release and nominate themselves. And um a total of eight members of the public did fill out a form and then um appointment was made at a later special council meeting when the council adopted Resolution zero two dash ninety. At that time, uh in that era, two thousand and two, um Office of Information Practices did not have firm guidance on whether nominees' names needed to be mentioned on the resolution, excuse me, on the body of the agenda, on the face of the agenda. Um, since then, O I P has revised their advice, at least in an informal opinion, and told us that to ensure members of the public have the ability to provide well-informed testimony that names should be referenced on the face of the meeting agenda when the appointment is going to be made. And they also suggested that the best way to do that, to have names submitted, would be in the form of a legislative proposal such as a resolution. So um so that those are some similarities and differences between that prior situation and what we're looking at today. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, members? Member Rollins Fernandez?
I'll turn, um. Uh, just for everyone's reference, the Resolution zero two dash ninety is on Granicus as well. And in the chat.
Members, we're still trying to decide again, either take a vote or by cons- consensus. Um, agree on what people need to submit. Member Paulson?
Um, I would propose that it be as close to a real election or real filing for um running for office as uh possible to include the um nomination and the accepted financial disclosure form. If the form is not filled out correctly, I would give them till the twentieth to re um submit it correctly. Um, but that's what I would propose, um because this person is gonna be um serving in the same manner as the rest of us and so should come in with the same disclosures as the rest of us, including how member Tasha came in.
Okay, anybody else? Vice Chair Segumara? Clerks? Office?
Um, thank you, Chair. Uh, for notice purposes, um, once your resolution is I believe that whatever has been submitted should be submitted at that time. Of course, you'll be able to ask questions um when you're interviewing the nominee, if there are questions or things that weren't, in your opinion, filled out properly. Um, but the financial disclosure statements, if they're made a part of this process, won't be reviewed by the Board of Ethics. So they won't be accepted. They're just going to be whatever the nominee submits.
So for us, do they have to be s- accepted by the Board of Ethics before we become a candidate?
Um, no, they're just required to be filed.
Hmm, and so to clarify, what you are saying is that it doesn't necessarily matter if it's filled out correctly or incorrectly, as long as they submit the nomination and the F D S and if there's not blanks where they're supposed to be filled in, it will be deemed legitimate um nomination because they met the criteria.
Right, and um like I was saying earlier, whether or not, so say, say, one of the candidates or nominees that you propose lives outside of the residency area, we're going to provide you with our opinion. Um, but ultimately, you will be making the decision. We're not going to eliminate anyone from the list. Um, because we we know that you folks are the ones making the actual decision on who is going to replace member comma.
Wait, I need clarification on that. Like, we gotta pick someone that lives in Kahului or else we're not following the law, so.
Correct.
You're just gonna give us the rope and say what you do with it, what you will?
And the the reason for that is um we, and the Office of the County of Clerk, yeah, we we didn't want to put ourselves in the position of making a decision that could potentially be challenged. Um, so we didn't want to hang up your process by a potential legal challenge that we made the incorrect decision based on something.
So you're just gonna tell us it's our decision, this person doesn't live in the district that's being replaced and you guys do with it what you will, you might break the law, but don't blame us, kind of thing?
Yes, you can ask for a clarification from the individual when they're um before you too. You know, so they might have a reason for uh why their voter registration wasn't updated or something like that. But we just didn't want to put ourselves in a position of inhibiting your ability to vet every nominee that the council puts forth.
Okay, um, I'm okay with uh the process being um to be considered a legitimate nominee that a completed F D S and nomination paper be submitted at the time of nomination prior to November tenth, twenty twenty-five at noon prior, right?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Uh, we need it ten days. You want to explain why? Madam Clerk?
Yes, the the eleventh, as you know, is a holiday, so the tenth allows us to um submit that for a public hearing notice to the paper of for hearing on the twentieth.
Okay, so I saw your hand, member Uhu Hodgens?
Thank you, Chair. First, I'll start with, I agree with Member Paulson, but then now I need some clarification. So you're not gonna tell us um if they live in Kahului or not, if they don't, for whatever reason. But to accommodate the charter where it said it must meet the same qualifications, isn't our only qualification living in the district for X amount of years?
For one year.
For one year. And I mean, like, all the things, you know, you gotta be a voting adult, but like for the for the specifics.
Right.
Okay.
That's the most important. And the, I'm looking at the text of Resolution O two dash ninety, uh which um O C S has recommended using as your template. Um, the under the first be resolved, um says at that time that Danny A. Mateo meets the requirements as provided by law for appointment to fill a council vacancy in accordance with Section three, four of the charter. So the council at that time made the finding that uh Danny Mateo did meet the qualifications. So any of you folks will be doing the same.
Okay, we're gonna do that. We're gonna do our own due diligence, is basically what you're saying. You're not gonna do it for us, okay. But we must appoint somebody who lives in the Kahului district area.
Right, we will provide you all the information that we can.
Sure.
For your consideration.
Okay, that I appreciate, thank you. Okay, I'm good with that. I'm good with Member Paulson's suggestion. I'm also good if we take up testimony on the twentieth and if it spills over until the twenty-first, if necessary, and wait till um the twenty-fifth to do the final vote. Unfortunately, I hope we never have to do this again. And considering that, I really hope we never have to do this again, I would prefer if we were all here in person to more than select the person we're going to have, but to really to honor member comma. So I would want Member Rollins Fernandez here in person.
Uh, we are agreed on that one? Any objections to that? No objections, okay. And then as far as the uh applica- uh the information required, no objections to what's laid out in the uh resolution? Okay, so then we come to does only um would only the members be able to propose a name?
Um, that wasn't laid out in the resolution, that was stated orally. That's.
About which one?
That, um, in order to consider a nominee legitimate, when that they need to turn in their nomination form and their financial disclosure before noon on November tenth. That was their suggestion. And I would like to say that we're going to follow their suggestion.
Okay. I think we understood that. We, I'm trying to just get consensus, you know, so we can add that to the reso, or spec- you know, clarification?
Um, yes, I think what you could do, if you want to, is under the be resolved, it's one A. Um, and it says any council member may submit, so any council member must submit. And then that has the proposed resolution to appoint. Um, also, the completed financial disclosure statement and the application for a nomination paper. Um, and those are currently attached as exhibits to the reso.
Okay, I have a question on that. Any council member may submit. Why was, why does it have to be must submit?
It doesn't necessarily, but if uh Member Paulson fills that you wanted to have more teeth that if council members are submitting one or more nominations, um that you have to have your person with all, with the application and and the financial disclosure.
No, it's just that, it's just that, you know, if there are a a few people nominating the same person, you know, you don't want every, you know, four or five different resos on the same person. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Right, well, I I don't necessarily think there'd be any problem with that. Um, you know, under under sunshine law, you may or may not know who the other people are are nominating.
Member Paulson?
I I think the point was, like, what are we considering a legit nomination without the must in there? I could write somebody's name and their address and that's a legit nomination without the financial disclosure, without the nomination paper, as it's written for me. Is that correct? And then it would be legitimate as written in the resolution that I turned in a name and an address, because it doesn't say I must include the nomination form and the financial disclosure for it to be considered a legitimate nomination.
Okay, so um, Ms. Clerk, could you reword A so that the underst- when the reader knows that the following items must be provided in order to have a legitimate application? But that not e- every council member must submit a
Chair.
A nominee.
Yes, I may, sorry to interrupt, but um our council services staff had suggested language, I think, along the lines of what you were thinking for the first be resolved clause.
Okay.
Which we can offer for the body's consideration. Any council member wishing to nominate an individual to fill the council vacancy must submit to the county clerk by noon on November tenth, twenty twenty-five, colon. And so then you have must embedded within that introductory clause, so the A would be the resolution and B would be the completed financial disclosure statement and nomination paper.
Okay, any objections to that correction? Uh, the clarification. So we're on the subject of do uh the does any member of the public have a opportunity to nominate themselves or somebody else? Or just a council member? Discussion on that. Member Paulson?
Um, I would be for just a council member, um. But I'm open to hearing other people's points of view.
Does anyone, oh, member, uh Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. Um, I would be supportive of uh allowing the public to submit their name directly to the clerk's office. I think I heard earlier the reason that there are concerns is um regarding the timing. Uh, that it would take time to verify um the person's residency for at least one year in Kahului and um sunshine law posting, but I guess that would be part of the timing. Um, so if that timeline could be described just a little bit clearer with a little more detail, so I understand and the public understands that challenge, if that is the challenge.
Chair, I'm sorry, if if O C S could interject just one more time, just for for context. Another difference between our current situation in two thousand and two, which I failed to mention earlier, is that um any resolution or bill that's gonna be considered by the council needs to be listed on a meeting agenda. So not just names, but in that, in this case, an actual resolution. So count uh members of the public obviously can't introduce resolutions, so one of the nine council members would have to introduce a resolution to get a member of the public um before the body as a candidate. So members of the public, in effect, could nominate themselves by contacting council members and ask to be included on a resolution, but I don't I don't think there's a mechanism for members of the public to directly get themselves on a council agenda without a resolution. Thank you.
David, in that scenario, can a council member nominate more than one person?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, there's no limitation as as this procedure is currently outlined. Thank you.
Members, oh, member Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair, and mahalo Director Rotz uh for that information. So uh what if I drafted up a resolution and just had an exhibit um that whoever applied directly to the clerk's office would, their names would be added to that exhibit? And that would be. And that would be the resolution?
David?
Thank you, Chair. That model would be workable under the sunshine law. We've seen similar mechanisms for board and commission appointment. So if the council accepts that process, it would be workable under the law. Thank you.
Is that what you're suggesting? Is that what you're suggesting, Member Rollins Fernandez?
Yeah, and I mean, that could just be how it is. It could just all be one resolution. Two. But I'm not opposed to it being multiple resolutions, whatever.
Any other comments, members? Madam Clerk, can you just clarify what language you'll be adding to the resolution? If we adopted that, if we included that suggestion?
I'd need to take just a short break to be able to come up with language. But I think one of the sorry, I've lost my thought. We could be, we could receive public nominations. I think one of the things that all of you are going to have to obviously keep in mind is the timeline and the time constraints. And this gets into something else that I'm sure you'll talk about in a little bit, which is, will you start the interviewing process on the twentieth? And how far? And I know that you have to get into deliberations before you recess. So that's something you may want to talk to OCS about in terms of how far you get into the deliberations. And if you have many, many nominees, it's going to take longer, obviously.
Chair.
Member Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. So that be resolved clause could be worded as any individual, sorry, let me clear my throat. Any individual interested in filling the council seat for the residency area of Kahului may submit an application or form or whatever directly to the clerk's office by and we can set a time that would work for the clerks in order to give them the amount of time that they would need to verify the residency of any individuals that are submitting that information. And it doesn't have to be a requirement, but we could add information on the reso or elsewhere, probably on the reso right now, is helpful information to assist the clerks in verifying residency for at least one year, include an electric bill from, you know, that far back or, you know, whatever, whatever other forms of verification that the clerks need.
Madam Clerk?
And so when we start getting into residency requirements, there's a whole host of information that we can look at to determine whether or not a voter has the residency requirement to vote. By extension, that also leads into candidates for council offices. So it's going to be very difficult and potentially impossible if there are situations that are very questionable in terms of someone's residency. So they are certifying that they are a resident. What we can go on that's readily available to us is their voter registration. So if they currently live in, reside in the Kahului residency area, even if they moved homes, as long as they moved homes within the residency area and they have lived there for one year prior to the submission of their nomination form, that's what we would intend to look at. Getting deeper into it in terms of trying to do, you know, back and forth with the nominee, you know, getting all kinds of additional information and all of that is going to be, like I said, it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, in this compressed timeframe. Just related to that, what I wanted to request the council amend on the resolution you're considering is one B in the be resolved section, to remove that first clause. So before a submitted resolution is eligible for posting on an agenda, I'd like to remove that clause and just have it start with the county clerk must verify to the council chair that the nominee meets the qualifications enumerated in Section three, three of the charter. And so those, as you're talking about, it really revolves around the one year in the Kahului residency area and that they are a voter in the county. Both of those things we can verify. We would be using the voter registration data, just so everyone's clear.
Okay, and then how long? I didn't hear how long you would need to verify that information. And so that's why I'm asking if if we were to ask, so I know if an individual is registered to vote in the district is the easiest and quickest way. There's water and sewer bills. That's information that belongs to the county that possibly could help. Because if someone's not registered, or I guess they have to register to vote in order to be considered eligible. But if they lived in an area and they were registered, like if they registered the day before?
Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we can provide to you is pretty quick in terms of the voter registration data and how long they have maintained their residency in that area, in the Kahului residency area. I think that if there are some questions, you know, on, we'll provide that and it'll be publicly provided to the chair for posting as meeting materials. If there are questions on, say, candidate, you know, nominee A, that would be something that the council would want to follow up on in terms of its inquiry. But I truly don't think that, given the compressed timeline, that we're going to be able to go out and get additional sources of information to try to qualify someone based on, like, different records that we would have more time for in the normal voter challenge situation.
Okay, that's fine. That their voting record or where they're registered, if they're registered to vote in Kahului would be the sole way to verify their residency, is what you're saying? Ms. Thompson?
That's the information that we can definitely tell you that we can provide to you.
Okay, I, I just understanding dynamics of power, I don't feel comfortable just being the gatekeepers as the council members. I'd like to give the public an opportunity to apply directly with the county clerk's office. And if that's the only way that they'd be able to apply with the county clerk's office is through being registered as a voter in Kahului for at least a year, then that's more than they would have had without it.
Well, the issue is time. If we had more time, then they could check further, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. So that would be my preference, is to enable individuals to apply directly. And then the verification would be a registered voter in Kahului for at least a year.
Okay. We already have that, right? Ms. Clerk? Ms. Clerk?
I'm not clear on what was said. If I could clarify?
You or the clerk's office to clarify?
I wasn't clear on what Member Rollins Fernandez said. If I could clarify?
Member Rollins Fernandez, could you repeat what you said?
No, I wanted to.
Well, you want to clarify what she said? Oh, go ahead.
Is it only by being a registered voter in Kahului that we're accepting for a year? Or that's one way to verify? Or did you mean?
For individuals?
That that's the only way that they can qualify is if they were registered to vote in Kahului for one, at least one year?
I guess that process, that detail of the process would be a little different for those that are applying directly to the clerk's office and not through a council member.
So if someone applies directly to the clerk's office, you're saying the requirement would be that they were registered in Kahului for at least a year? But if they're not applying through a council member, any evidence that they were living in Kahului residency area for at least a year is acceptable? Is that what you meant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are you sure you want us to be the ones to verify their residency?
Yes.
There's a variety, she's saying that there could be a variety of ways that somebody that we nominate could be verified. But if someone's nominating themselves, they have to be a registered voter in the area that they're in Kahului in order to nominate themselves directly to the clerk's office as a standard. But if we nominate them, like, we could get an electric bill in their name for a year or something, if they're not registered to vote or some other way? Because there's more than one way to verify that somebody's lived in the district for at least a year, right?
Okay, does everybody understand that? That we can accept telephone, I mean, electric bills? Ms. Clerk?
It might be time for a morning break. There's a couple of things that we would like to talk to OCS about, if you don't mind.
Okay. Members, come back at eleven fifteen? Okay, thank you. Meeting recessed. Thank you. Meeting recessed.
Well, the special meeting of November 3rd. Please reconvene. It's 11:28. Ms. Clerk, do you have clarifying sentences for us so we can continue our process?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before the break or during the break, we were speaking with Director Rutz. And he was strongly recommending that the council go one way or the other. So either the nominees go through the council members by resolution, or if it's going to be anyone, anyone can basically self-nominate by submitting an application and whatever supporting documents that you want us to ask for to our office. Then that would be listed. Their names would be listed in a resolution under the council chair for consideration on the 20th.
Members, what do you think of that? Pardon me?
Can you clarify the options?
Could you repeat what you just said?
Sure. So the first option would be what council chair presented today, which is that Resolution 25-202. So that's where the council members themselves would submit resolutions with their nominees' names. And you could submit more than one. You're not limited to only one, I understand. Or the other way would be that the council members don't submit resolutions. That members of the public themselves, or whoever wishes to be a nominee, submits an application to our office. And we collect all of that information and all of those names and put them on a exhibit to a resolution submitted by the council chair. Because the resolution is the only vehicle to get it before the body officially.
So basically, you're saying not both, one or the other?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Member Cook?
I'm in favor of Option 1. I think that the timeline that we're under, the criteria that is outlined in the Charter, it meets with what our needs are. And I'm hopeful that this can move forward without being to the last minute. Thank you.
So Option 1 is only the council members would submit one or more resolutions? Okay, any more feedback? Member, Oohhajin?
Chair.
Member Ronz Fernandez?
I have my hand up, but I can wait for Member Ronz Fernandez.
Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. Mahalo, Member Oohhajin. It's still not super clear to me why we have to choose one or the other. Would you please explain that a little clearer?
Madam Clerk, I didn't meet with them. They met by themselves. So they came up with these options. Madam Clerk?
I'll ask Director Rutz to give his opinions. I think one of the differences would be just logistics, really. But Director Rutz?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Ronz Fernandez, for the question. Really, we think it's about clarity for both the public and council members, considering the short timeframe that the body needs to work under. You know, we don't have legal precedent to point to exactly, but there's been a thought, discussion among our legal team. Could even be potential violation of equal protection if there's different procedures that are set up. So just a suggestion that it would promote clarity to either go with the single resolution option that lists all of the self-nominated members of the public and qualified members of the public, as Deputy County Clerk was outlining, which would take an amendment to the resolution you have before you today, or to stick with what Resolution 25-202 envisions, which is council members, in effect, vet interested members of the public and make a nomination through submitting a resolution. Thank you, Chair.
Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. So if we have to choose one or the other, I would choose to enable individuals to apply directly or submit their name directly to the clerk's office. Anyone that was intending to submit a resolution, any of the council members intending to submit a resolution can just have the individual apply directly with the clerk's office. I think it would also be a little more fair because then it wouldn't have the immediate endorsement of any individual council member. Everyone would have a fair playing ground field, whatever, for applications. Everyone would be applying or submitting their name themselves and, you know, without necessarily having the backing of a politician. Mahalo Chair.
Any other comments? Preferences? Member Paulton, and then Member Oohhajin's. Member Oohhajin's first, and then Member Paulton.
I'm happy we're going to select one way. I think that's the most efficient way to do things. Which way? I think I'm still leaning towards the council member version of supporting it. As one, that's what it's here in this resolution. And two, we are on a short timeline. So it would give us the opportunity to vet because I think we're having discussions about residency and how to verify that. It would give the council member a time to vet. We can work with you folks, and then we can continue that discussion on the floor. Otherwise, I think it would be a lot of work for you folks if we, let's say, had a whole bunch of names come in your direction. And we only have, what was, 30 days. Now we're at 20-something days. So I just want to make sure we're making our timeline. And so to make it the most efficient, I think it would be the council version of the resolution, considering we can all do a whole bunch. Our emails are public. They can reach out to us. That's where I'm leaning towards. But I figured I'd just say that. Thanks, Chair.
Member Johnson, do you have any comments?
Okay. So I'd like to hear from the clerks, like, how much of a burden that would be if we allow John Q. Public, Suzie Q. Public, to go and do it that way, as opposed to each individual council member? Or, you know, if a council member wants to put their name forward?
Ms. Clerk? Thank you. Well, one of the variables is we won't know how many people may be submitting nominations. So initially, currently it's noon next Monday, we would have to have all of the names submitted. In terms of posting the public hearing notice, we would have the names attached to the reso from the council chair. But following those submissions, we would have to do what we can in terms of verifying their residency and the other information. But I think the caveat to that is any nominee could submit whatever they want to submit in terms of supporting documents, either at the time of their filing or as testimony when the council does hear the resolution. So the answer is really, it depends.
Your answer is, it depends. You're not just going to look at the voter registration and that's... I mean, I think, to my mind, it sounds like a doable process. It sounds... But you're saying it depends on what the voters do or the applicants do? It doesn't require you to... Like, they might load you up with 20 documents, but all you really need to look at is the voter registration. Is that correct?
That's correct in terms of what we can readily access. But there's also all of the prep that goes involved, that is involved with the Legislative Division staff in terms of public hearing notice and ensuring that the copies are sent out and all of the logistics that it takes to run these council meetings. So it's not just, you know, putting names on paper and checking a voter reg, which that wouldn't take that much time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have comments? Member Paulton?
Before I have my comments, could I have a question? The person that's going to fill the council vacancy for Kahului, how many votes from council members needed? Is it super majority? Is it majority? And only one person can get five or six votes? What if more than one person has five or six votes?
I can answer. The first part of that is a simple majority. But in terms of multiple nominees getting multiple five votes, I would like to defer to Director Rutz.
Director Rutz?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Paulton, for the question. So again, the council, under the Charter, only acts by ordinance or resolution. And what's envisioned in this process is acting by resolution. As Deputy County Clerk mentioned, it would be simple majority. So you would hope to come out of that next special council meeting with one resolution adopted. If somehow, during the course of the meeting, two different resolutions attain five votes, we would recommend that the body not adjourn until there's a motion to reconsideration, so you end up with only one resolution coming out of that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I guess for my discussion on it is I don't really care personally. I don't want to gatekeep, but the whole process is being gate-kept by five people. And if an applicant can't get one member to sponsor them, can they get one vote, much less five votes? Would be the reality that I'm kind of tracking. The alternative to not being gate-kept is to pull papers in February because then that's the process for anybody to self-nominate, right? So I guess I would lean toward members submitting resolutions. Because if they can't get one member to sponsor them, will they be able to garner the needed five votes? But at the end of the day, I don't really care. I mean, personally.
Anybody else? Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. I saw Member Sugimura's hand up as well. I don't know who came first, but she hasn't spoken yet. I'm happy to yield to Member Sugimura and speak after.
Please proceed.
Remember Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. Uh, mahalo member Uuhodgens. It's not like, it's still not super clear to me why we have to choose one or the other. Would you please explain that a little clearer?
Madam Clerk, um, I didn't meet with them. They met by themselves, so they came up with these options. Madam Clerk.
Um, I'll ask Director Rotz to give his opinions. I think one of the, um, one of the differences would be, um, just logistics, really. But Director Rotz, Director Rotz.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Ronz Fernandez for the question. Really, we think it's about clarity for both the public and council members, considering the short timeframe that the body needs to work under. You know, we don't have legal precedent to point to exactly, but there's been a thought, discussion among our legal team. Could even be potential violation of equal protection if there's different procedures that are set up. So just, um, a suggestion that it would promote clarity to either go with the single resolution option that lists all of the self-nominated members of the public and qualified members of the public, as Deputy County Clerk was outlining, which would take an amendment to the resolution you have before you today, or to stick with what Resolution 25-202 envisions, which is council members, in effect, vet interested members of the public and make a nomination through submitting a resolution. Thank you, Chair.
Remember Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. Mahalo Chair. So if we have to choose one or the other, I would choose to, um, enable individuals to apply directly or submit their name directly to the clerk's office. Anyone that was intending to submit a resolution, any of the council members intending to submit a resolution can just have the individual apply directly with the clerk's office. I think it would also be a little more fair because then it wouldn't have the immediate endorsement of any individual council member. Everyone would have a fair playing ground, um, field, whatever, for, um, applications. Everyone would be applying or submitting their name themselves and, you know, without necessarily having the backing of, um, a politician. Mahalo Chair.
Any other comments, preferences? Member Paulton and then member Uuhodgens. Well, member Uuhodgens first and then member Paulton.
I'm happy we're gonna select one, one way. I think that's the most efficient way to do things. Which way, I think I'm still leaning towards the council member version of supporting it. As one, that's what it's here in this resolution. And two, we are on a short timeline. So it would give us the opportunity to vet because I think we're having discussions about, you know, residency and how to verify that. It would give the council member a time to vet. We can work with you folks and then we can continue that discussion on the floor. Otherwise, I think it would be a lot of work for you folks if we, let's say, had a whole bunch of names come in your direction and we only have, what was, 30 days. Now we're at 20-something days. So, um, I just want to make sure we're making our timeline. And so to make it the most efficient, I think it would be the council version of the resolution, considering we can all do a whole bunch. Our emails are public, they can reach out to us. That's where I'm leaning towards, but I figured I'd just say that. Thanks, Chair.
Member Johnson, do you have any comments?
Um, okay. So I'd like to hear from the clerks, like, how much of a burden that would be if we allow John Q. Public, Suzie Q. Public, to go and do it that way as opposed to each individual council member? Or, you know, if a council member wants to put their name forward?
Ms. Clerk. Thank you. Well, for one of the variables is we won't know how many people may be submitting nominations. So initially, by, um, currently is noon next Monday, we would have to have all of the names submitted. In terms of posting the, um, the public hearing notice, we would have the names attached to the reso from the council chair. But following those submissions, we would have to do what we can in terms of verifying their residency and the other information. But I think the caveat to that is any nominee could submit whatever they want to submit in terms of supporting documents, either at the time of their filing or as testimony when the council does hear the resolution. So the answer is really, it depends.
Your answer is, it depends. You're not just gonna look at the voter registration and that's... I mean, I think, to my mind, it sounds like a doable process. It sounds, but you're saying it depends on what the voters do or the applicants do? It doesn't require you to, like, they might load you up with 20 documents, but all you really need to look at is the voter registration. Is that correct?
That's correct in terms of what we can readily access. But there's also all of the prep that goes involved, that is involved with the Legislative Division staff in terms of public hearing notice and ensuring that the copies are sent out and all of the logistics that it takes to run these council meetings. So it's not just, you know, putting names on paper and checking a voter reg, which that wouldn't take that much time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have comments? Uh, member Paulton?
Um, before I have my comments, could I have a question? The person, um, that's going to fill the council vacancy for Kahului, how many votes from council members needed? Is it super majority? Is it majority? And only one person can get five or six votes? What if more than one person has five or six votes?
I can answer. The first part of that is a simple majority. But in terms of multiple nominees getting multiple five votes, I would like to defer to Director Rotz.
Director Rotz.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Paulton, for the question. So again, the council, under the Charter, only acts by ordinance or resolution. And what's envisioned in this process is acting by resolution. As Deputy County Clerk mentioned, it would be simple majority. So you would hope to come out of that next special council meeting with one resolution adopted. If somehow, during the course of the meeting, two different resolutions attain five votes, we would recommend that the body not adjourn until there's a motion to reconsideration, to reconsider, so you end up with only one resolution coming out of that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I guess, um, for my discussion on it is, I don't really care personally. I don't, I don't wanna gatekeep, but the whole process is being gatekept by five people. And if an applicant can't get one member to sponsor them, can they get one vote, much less five votes? Would be, um, the reality that I'm kind of tracking. The alternative to not being gatekept is to pull papers in February because then that's the process for anybody to self-nominate, right? So I guess I would, I would kind of lean toward, um, members submitting resolutions because if they can't get one member to sponsor them, will they be able to garner the needed five votes? But at the end of the day, I don't really care. I mean, personally.
Anybody else? Remember Ronz Fernandez?
Oh, mahalo Chair. I saw member Sugimura's hand up as well. I don't know who came first, but she hasn't spoken yet. I'm happy to yield to member Sugimura and speak after.
Please proceed. I'll, I'll speak after.
She'll wait for you. Remember Ronz Fernandez, you can go first.
Oh, mahalo Chair. I understand my colleagues' concerns. For the last comment, um, I, I don't, I don't think just because someone, um, may not have the votes of the council members that they shouldn't even have an opportunity to put their name forward. I, I'm in favor of, uh, I'm a proponent for as much transparency, accessibility, um, inclusivity and democracy as possible. I, I'm happy to accommodate our clerk's office to try to, you know, make it as, uh, least administratively difficult as possible. But I would just, as someone who came from a family that was not politically engaged, that was not involved at all in any government, I know how intimidating, um, government can be. I know how intimidating it can be to contact a council member when you don't have a pre-existing relationship. And I'm, I'm very aware and mindful of how those power dynamics can oppress our people. And I, um, want to, I don't want to deny anyone the ability to be able to put their name forward. There could be amazing people that we don't know, uh, living in that district who would do an amazing job at filling this seat. And I don't want to deprive, uh, the District of Kahului and the rest of our county that opportunity to be represented by, um, someone that we just don't happen to know. And so I, I guess I'm advocating pretty strongly at this point for it to be as open a process as possible and to, um, apply directly with the clerk's office. Mahalo Chair.
Anyone else? I'm gonna be asking for a motion on this so that we can deal with it and then move on to the next. Uh, member Cook?
No, thank you, Chair. I would just like to point out, remind us all, there's gonna be an election next year right after this. So all of the, the fairness, participation, and potential people to run for this office is going to be an election next year. This is somebody to fulfill the seat immediately. So I recognize it'd be great. It is a good process that we currently have that anyone who would meet the criteria could sign up to run for the Kahului seat. This process right now is replacing one of our colleagues for the rest of this term. So right around the corner, anybody who wants to sign up and run can. Right now, and hopefully, we can keep it the way that the reso is written. The council will select someone within 30 days. If we don't, then the mayor's going to. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's no longer 30 days. More like 23. Uh, Vice Chair Sugimura.
So could I ask, which I think is connected to this, David Rotz? Earlier in the meeting, he talked about a proposed language for 1A, where he talked about, um, a council member wishing, or whatever he said. Could David Rotz say that again?
David, do you remember what you said on 1A?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think the language was, "Any council member wishing to nominate an individual to fill the council vacancy must submit to the county clerk by noon and November, noon on November 10, 2025," colon. And then there was the A for the resolution and the B for the paperwork.
Okay, so move.
Okay, we had agreed on that, but let's make it real clear for the record.
Okay.
Second, moved by member Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by member Cook, to adopt the language as read, as stated by Director Rotz with regard to, um, number one, number one A. Okay? Any discussion? Remember Ronz Fernandez?
Um, mahalo Chair. I think that what you were going for was like a poll for each council member to state their position first because otherwise, I'm gonna move to amend to make it so that individuals interested in filling the Kahului seat can apply directly to the clerk's office.
Yeah, I think that would be a separate amendment. I think this, this was more to clarify when I've said earlier that any council member ma, um...
Wishes to.
I think it was must. I thought it was must. But anyway, it was a clarification of, of giving the council member a choice. So it didn't have anything to do with what you're talking about. Okay?
I, I understand, but, um, I heard you ask us to dispose of this first. And by adopting, uh, this, um, the must, because that becomes irrelevant if we're gonna allow the public to apply with the direct, um, directly with the clerk's office. This, this whole correction of may or must becomes irrelevant because this clause wouldn't even be there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted both, a choice. So you just want either or? Right?
Oh, I mean, it can be both.
No, 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 I'm just asking.
Um, Chair, point of information.
Yes, member Paulton?
I thought when we came back from recess, the clerks, and Mr. Rotz said it had to be either or because of legal challenges. Is that not what happened?
Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Paulton. I, I wouldn't say that it has to be either or. That was just a suggestion. We, we don't have specific precedent we can point to on a situation like this. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I didn't understand that correctly. What, what, can you repeat what was said when we came back from recess? Because I thought it was, you could do this or you could do that.
Okay, I thought the clerks said something right after recess. Not you, right? Madam Clerk?
Chair.
Yes, but, remember Ronz Fernandez?
So what member Paulton is saying is correct, that when we came back, reconvened from recess, they did rec, that was their recommendation. But as the final decision makers, we have the authority to make the final decision on whether we take their advice and choose one or the other. Or, um, we decline to accept their advice and we put both. They, both, uh, Director Rotz and Ms. Thompson, uh, explained their concerns with putting both. And so it, we're not legally prohibited from, from putting both. It's just their advice that we choose one or the other. And I would be happy to put both.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is just one, though, right now? And then you can vote, you can, uh, argue against it and vote no. And then make up your motion. Okay, are we clear on that? Everybody clear on the motion? This is only for the council members to make a proposal through a resolution, not that other exhibit that was referred to earlier in discussion. Any more discussion on the, on the motion on the floor? All those in favor of... Oh, roll call? I thought I saw member Johnson's hand up. Okay, roll call.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Aye.
Councilmember Paulton?
Kana Lula.
Councilmember Johnson?
May I repeat the motion?
Okay, uh, member Vice Chair Sugimura? It was your motion, right?
Basically, it takes the first suggestion, right? So that the council members would submit the resolution and taking into consideration the nomination paper and the, uh, financial statement, financial disclosure statements as part of the resolution has been the decision.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna be able to have the people submit. If I, so I wanna be able, so I'm not sure.
So you would vote no?
I'm gonna vote no then.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. Thank you, Chair.
Here, we have one no. Next, Councilmember Ronz Fernandez?
Uh, Chair, um, I know we're voting, but the, the explanation that you just gave, member Johnson, was contrary to what you just told me before we started taking the vote, which was, this is cleaning up the section to enable both. And so if we wanted to choose one or the other, then we would not put this one on and would only have the other. All right, I'm just gonna vote no.
Yeah, okay. I, I thought I said that we are separating the two, the two now. Okay, it's not a combined thing. This is only with the council members providing, um, resolutions to nominate someone.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook votes aye. Councilmember Uuhodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinancy?
No.
Council Chair Lee?
Aye.
And returning to Councilmember Paulton?
No.
Chair, there are five noes, four ayes, motion fails.
Whoa, no, no. I think it's four, four. It's four, four.
So sorry.
The dreaded, the dreaded score, four, four. And this is the reason why we need a ninth person. All right, members, um, we need to make a decision. Are you going to now make a motion to include both ways? To self-nominate and have the council? Yes, member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. I'm gonna make the first motion to be only applying directly to the clerk's office. And then if that fails, I'll make a motion for it to be, in addition to the council members applying directly because my preference would be just for everyone to apply directly to the clerk's office. So I move to amend the resolution to strike, uh, the clause that council members may submit to the county clerk by noon on November 10th and to replace it with any individual interested in, um, applying may submit their application to the county clerk by noon on November 10th, 2025.
Second, who, member Johnson, seconded? Okay, moved by member Ronz Fernandez and by member Johnson. Now, this is allowing the public to apply at the county clerk's office, right? Okay, in addition to...
Yeah, only.
Only, only.
No.
Just only. So the, in other words, council members will also have to have their nominees go to the clerk's office and apply.
Correct, correct. And then if this fails, then I'll make a motion to make it both.
Any more discussion? Member Uuhod, where? Member Johnson?
Thank, thank you, Chair. The seconder, this process is so political and I think this is a good way to take the politics out of it. We have, we have to mourn our council members passing. And one way to do it is for us to be respectful and take the politics out of this. I think this is a way that we can just move forward, look at a list, and then go from there. It's a delicate balance and who'd have thought that these serious events led to this? But members, let's try to make it so it's not so darn political. That's my second. Thank you, Chair.
Comments? Oh, oh, member, uh, discussion? Member Uuhodgens?
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna be voting no on this. Um, I do support both processes if we need to do that. I don't wanna throw this on the clerk's shoulders and we have only 19-something days to figure this out. So I'm gonna be voting no, but I'm happy to support both processes so long as both processes are similar in what we determine as qualifications and whatever they need to submit so that we can, um, ensure that it's, um, same. It might be a different avenue to get to the same place, but as long as it's the same. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, roll call.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
No.
Councilmember Paulton?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ronz Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Uuhodgens?
No.
Councilmember Sinancy?
Aye.
Council Chair Lee?
No.
Chair, there are three ayes, five noes, motion fails.
Remember Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. Uh, I move to amend the resolution to add a new whereas clause subsection B that would enable interested individuals to apply directly, um, to the clerk's office by noon on November 10, 2025 and have the same, uh, submission requirements as the council members', um, process to submit.
Okay, I think, um, David or Madam Clerk, it would not be a whereas, it'd be more under the be it resolved as a number two, maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say whereas? I meant be it resolved. Correct, you're, you're correct, Chair. That was my bad.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Second.
Okay, moved by member Ronz Fernandez, seconded by member Sinancy, that we add another, uh, item under be it resolved, whether it's, I guess it would be number two. And as stated, the, uh, so number one establishes the process, um, where under A, a council member may submit. And so now we're gonna also add a section that says, uh, the public may self-submit. Okay, self-nominate.
Chair, if I may just work on clarification, you could modify, um, under be it resolved, 1A, any council member or any individual interested in applying.
Okay, that's, that's good, right? Remember Ronz Fernandez?
Aye, member.
That's good. And it was seconded by member Sinancy. Any more discussion? Member Cook?
Thank you, Chair. I won't be supporting this. One of the, anyway, in my career, I've learned to listen to the people who are doing the work. If the clerk's office and OCS, who aren't political, who are basically doing their job, is recommending one or the other, um, I'm going to abide by that. So my preference was number one. That's just letting people know I feel and just thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
No.
Councilmember Paulton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Ronz Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Uuhodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinancy?
Aye.
Council Chair Lee?
No.
Chair, motion passes five to three.
Okay, that one is done. Let's see, what else do we have here?
So to be a legitimate nominee, either they submit or we submit a reso to the clerk's office and it needs to have their nomination form as well as their FDS completed. We did agree on that. And it would be the must. Or the language that Mr. Rotz had said previously is, that's, we consensus agreed that. And now that we said it could be either or, that consensus agreement applies to both.
All right, David, do you wanna comment on your comment?
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, I think it's actually a procedural question for the parliamentarian on where we stand in amending the resolution at this point.
Um, so, um, I think that you're bringing up a good point. Councilmember Paulton, um, under, um, 1A, little i, it says, um, a proposed resolution to appoint a qualified nominee modeled after Resolution 200290. And for clarification, that would only apply to council members. But applicants would submit, under number two, the nominee's completed financial disclosure statement form and the, uh, their application for nomination paper. So if it's a public, um, person nominating themselves, they would submit those two items. they would submit those two items under number two and council members would submit both number, little i and two ayes.
And for clarification, Madam Clerk, when the public submits their nomination, it would come onto my, my resolution, right?
Yes.
I take on all the public nominees, okay?
Yeah. Vice Chair Sukimura?
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna ask that question because usually there's a process, right, for the resolutions to come forward. It's not general public that loosely.
I'm, I'm it, yeah.
You're it. Okay, thank you.
All right, everybody clear on that? So what else do we have to, to vote on and to get to the main motion?
Just currently, this, this one amendment is before you, but I would also request amending its be it resolved 1B to remove the first clause and so that it would just start with the county clerk must verify to the council chair that the nominee meets the qualifications enumerated in section 3.3 of the charter.
Okay, I believe we agreed on that by consensus, but we can take a motion, Vice Chair. You move to delete per county clerk?
Delete before a submitted resolution is eligible for posting on an agenda. Delete that part.
Right. Second, moved by Vice Chair Sukimura, seconded by Member Uuhu Hodgens to delete before a submitted resolution is eligible for posting on an agenda. Discussion? Any more discussion? Member Paulton?
So this doesn't stop the clerk from letting us know that their benchmark standard for somebody to be eligible, but they just won't take action on it. They'll just let us know that the benchmark standard of them being eligible has been met or they hasn't, has been or has not been met, and then we proceed accordingly.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct. We will verify the information that we can in terms of voter registration status, et cetera, and provide that to you for decision-making.
Thanks. Sometimes I need English clarified to regular English.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. All ayes, one excuse, well, not one excuse. We only have eight. Motion carries. unanimous.
Thank you. So Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So earlier it was discussed that we're gonna be taking up final vote of this on the deadline of, the deadline for the council.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
The twenty-fifth of October. So what if?
Of what?
I'm sorry, November. So what if we're not able to come to a decision? It automatically then triggers that the mayor makes a decision?
Yes, if we pass midnight, I guess.
Okay.
Member Cook?
Chair, do you project that we would be having testimony on the twenty-fifth, the last date?
Oh, that would be a reconvened meeting.
So no testimony?
No testimony. It's just deliberations. Okay, okay, fingers crossed and knock on wood and whatever. Anything else that needs to be clarified? Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. Okay, so quickly again, for that same clause, be it resolved 1A, little 1, do we think that's clear to the public? Any council member or individual may submit to the county clerk by noon on November 10, 2025, a proposed resolution to appoint a qualified nominee. So are we asking them, I mean, I know here we're saying that they would just do little i, i. But I don't know if having that little i.
Well, A covers the public. A covers the public.
Yes. But are we asking individuals to submit a proposed resolution? Because that's how the entire sentence would read, right? Any council member or individual may submit to the county clerk by noon on November 10, 2025, a proposed resolution to appoint a qualified nominee.
Okay, okay, we have some clarification, Madam Clerk.
If council wishes those to be separate so that it's cleaner, you could do A, as, as stated, and then B, a new section, and then we could renumber it. B, the public, any individual, any individual interested in applying may submit and then list only the, the documents that are in i, i.
You want to make a motion, make a motion to that effect?
Moved.
So moved by second, second. Anybody? Our Member Uuhu Hodgens, seconded in that. And that, as you know, is to clarify what the public should do because they are not going to submit a resolution. They're just gonna submit their application. Okay, so this clears it up for the public. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Vice Chair Sukimura?
Aye.
Councilmember Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Uuhu Hodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinancy?
Aye.
Council Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair, seven ayes, one no. Motion carries.
All right, any need for any further clarification, additions, or omissions?
Chair, if I could just?
Wait, are you gonna give us something that we need to do?
If, yes. If you would, OCS and our office, can we please ask for rule nineteen, sorry, thirteen C authority, which would allow us to make non-substantive changes to the resolution and also rule nineteen suspension due to the amendments?
So moved. Oh, I was gonna call on you first. You had your hand up.
I can do that after this amendment.
Okay. Second, seconded by Member Uuhu Hodgens, moved by Member Tamara Paulton. The motion as stated by the county clerk. Any more discussion?
This is necessary so that we can take final action today as well as to allow for any non-substantive revisions or changes.
Correct. Do we need a roll call, Mr. Cook? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. All ayes, zero noes, motion carries. All right. Now you had something else you wanted to do, Member Paulton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this process that the clerks and OCS set up for us to fill the vacancy was very transparent, very democratic, very fair. And thank you for your work on this to make it be so. Also, deepest condolences to the Kama, Ohana, and staff. I also wanted to say that the process of scheduling meetings has not been democratic, transparent, or fair. When the chair unilaterally decides to push back items for months with no good reason. This is the exact reason why Councilmember Molina unsat Kelly King for not putting items on the agenda in a timely manner. This right here is how fairness, democratic process, transparency opens. Unilaterally saying we're not gonna schedule it for months when the process started two years ago is not fair, is not democratic, is not transparent. And this is why council chairs have been unseated in the past. So I'd like to put that back on the agenda, the November 12 bill nine.
And it's not on this agenda?
The process for moving forward after a council member has a vacancy is on the agenda and I feel like it's sufficiently broad.
No, we're talking about the process to fill a vacancy. We're not talking about bill nine.
This needs to be addressed.
We can address it in another meeting.
If, if you'd like me to continue to participate in this process, it all needs to be democratic, transparent, and fair. Not one process be democratic, transparent, and fair and another one behind closed doors, undemocratic, untransparent, and unfair. It all needs to be. If we're doing our, our work, it all needs to be democratic, transparent, and fair. Not pick and choose which processes are democratic, transparent, and fair.
Yeah, I think all that we are doing is transparent. It's, you have a different point of view. And if you read my press release, you would see the chronology and the timeline and that till this day, I do not have the committee report that I know of. So check the facts. Shall we take the vote, everybody?
No, no. You didn't call for discussion.
I thought you were discussing it.
So only I get to discuss?
Well, I don't see anybody raising their hand. Anybody else who would like to talk on this motion, on the resolution? Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. I'm asking you to schedule bill nine when we agreed on November 12, because this is the only opportunity to ask you publicly and so that you aren't making unilateral decisions without any consent of your colleagues, Chair.
Well, you know, I don't believe in blindsided discussions. We need an open and fair discussion that is agendized. And after eight years, I'm surprised you guys don't know the process. I'm calling for the vote, Madam Clerk.
I have more discussion.
Chair, this is an abuse of power, Chair. You're, don't abuse your power in this way, Chair. You've been such a good Chair all the way up until this, and I know you don't support bill nine. I know you've been undermining all of it all this time, so just schedule it.
You know, recess.
On November 12.
Well, the November 3rd special council meeting, please reconvene. Members, we have the Resolution 25-202 before us. With the amendments, we are ready for the vote on the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Member Paulton?
I don't like being ambushed with a press release. We haven't had a chair's meeting since I asked violence in the workplace by you against me to be put on the agenda, so this is where we're discussing it. It's not a fair process, it's not transparent, and it's not a democratic process.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Uuhu Hodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinensi?
Aye.
Council Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair, there are eight ayes, zero noes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, members, for your participation, and this meeting is adjourned.